Joining us were the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, may be seated.
Talk about the recognition?
Sure, Jason, or Mr. Snyder, if you wouldn't mind introducing your team, and then I wanted to share just a few comments of my appreciation of what you guys are doing with before-school care, after-school care, and the plans for next summer. So, if you would introduce your team, please.
Sure. I wanted to recognize the daycare and the before-care and after-care program at Columbia because it's something that's really special for us. I think parents get a lot of appreciation and, you know, the kids enjoy going to it. And it's just an all-around good program. So, the before-care and after-care program, we've had for as long as I've been at Columbia. It was there long before I have done it. But two ladies have kind of run that show. And Debbie Bryant, I'm gonna have you introduce your staff here in just a minute. And you can kind of tell a little bit about the program and how long you've been doing it. They open up at 6:30 in the morning, and they meet kids after school till 5:30 in the evening. And they do a fantastic job. Upwards 100, 100 or so kids in that program in the evenings. It's been even higher than that in some years. It just all depends on the needs. And they do fantastic with that. Hannah Seward is our daycare director. I'm gonna have her introduce her staff that's here tonight. And she, she's been with us for, we've talked about this, it's our third or fourth year. Fourth year that we're going into this. And Mrs. Vance talked to us a couple of years ago about opening up a daycare for our staff. And that program has been very successful as well. I think if you talk to the, to the parents that have the kids attend that, they really appreciate it. I think it brings a great resource and asset to our corporation. So, I'm gonna let you guys introduce your staff real quick, and then I'm gonna let Mrs. Vance and the board recognize you.
Good evening. My name's Debbie Bryant, and I've been at the school system for over 25 years. And I've been doing the before and after-school program. And staff members are Brooke Towell and Kyla Towell, are a couple of my staff members. We start at 6:30 in the morning, and then we're there till 5:30 in the evening.
And you have, you have a bunch of other staff members, though, too.
Yes, yes, oh, yes.
Two, three. You got, you got some...
We have, we use high school helpers. We employ them to come and help us. And then we've got other staff members.
And I'm Hannah. This great daycare is a really great program. I've had so many teachers tell me that this is what has prevented them from quitting the past few years. So, we're really lucky as a corporation to have it. And we couldn't do it without our amazing employees like Ms. Brooke Towell, who does this part-time, and Katie, who is the leader of our toddler room. And they are amazing.
Thank you. I really thank you ladies for all that you do. It has been such a blessing to our community. And I know that when I talk to Mrs. Bryant and Ms. Towell in regards to the opportunity to have the summer program next year, you two embrace that and are running with that. And I'm excited for our community and what we're gonna be able to offer our students next summer. So, thank you for all of the work that you're doing with that. And Hannah and ladies, thank you. I know so many times you miss out on professional development and those things because you're taking care of those students and that does not, or those kids, not students, but those kids, that does not go overlooked. So, thank you so much for your help and support. And as Mr. Snyder said, it's been a key component of our retention of teachers, even recruitment of teachers. And without you, we would not be able to do that. So, thank you for the role you play in this district and what you're doing to help our, our staff, students, and the community at large. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. I think you deserve a round of applause. I know it's a riveting meeting, and you're all welcome to stay. But if any of you from the daycare or anybody else feels like you need to leave at this time, you are more than welcome to do so.
Not in the early morning again.
Yes. Thank you, ladies. Next item of business is that we will recess the regular board meeting and begin a, I'm sorry, we need to look at a public hearing to hold additional appropriations and adopt additional appropriations resolution at this time for a bond resolution. Do we all get that? It's a resolution. We are looking at, do you want to go ahead and explain what we're doing with the bond?
So, we're looking at bond proceeds to help take care of just a few items across the district. One is to help offset those things that are happening with the operational fund and what everybody's been hearing about at the state level. So, bond proceeds can help offset some of those items that we have concerns about. We also know that there are HVAC concerns at Rochester Middle School that we are addressing. And also, our tennis courts are in need, and that's a community asset. And that is a need right now that we are looking at as well. We don't believe that the bond monies are enough to take care of all of those concerns. But we want to make sure that we are doing the best that we can with those appropriations. And we'll be working diligently with the board and with principals and with our director of maintenance to make sure that we get those items covered that are most pressing.
So, at this time, the next item on the agenda is this board to hold additional appropriations hearing. And after the presentation, then there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about additional appropriations of the bond project. So, if anyone has any questions, we can open, open the door for discussion on the bond process. Mr. Schreiner?
I think last meeting, you probably went in more detail. Do you have actual part numbers that you've come, I mean, how'd you come up with this amount of money? I mean, surely you've got some kind of estimates? I mean, or if we just give you money, then you figure it out, spend it, that's...
Oh, no, no. These, these are projects that need to be taken care of. And we are, we are bonding for the projects that Mrs. Vance mentioned just a few minutes ago, including HVAC things in the middle school and, what else did you got?
The tennis courts. Tennis courts will also be able to offset any operational costs in regards to transportation, technology devices, those types of things. And we just provide cost estimates to the board in regards to, we don't have the bids out yet, but we have cost estimates for those projects.
So, the board does have rough numbers to kind of go by. Okay. Well, my concern, none of this money is going into the education fund, is it?
Correct.
Correct?
That is correct.
I'm a little concerned where that education fund's at. When I got on the board, Jim Streeter was going off. And I think most of you know Jim, very successful, smart guy for numbers. One thing he told me is always keep a million dollars in that education fund. He said, you know, if something comes up, so you can meet the payroll. Because generally, that's about a lot of a month's payroll is. And the last few meetings, I see it's negative. So, what's going on there? What's the cause of that? And how's that gonna be replenished?
So, right now, we are going through with the education fund and through attrition and retirements, we have been able to absorb some of that. Some of that is a change in funding formula in regards to how they are handling curricular materials. And that funding formula that came in that was unexpected at the last minute. We've had increases in health insurance, which is one of the benefits to employees. So, that is something that we're really down on. Shaw, I don't know if you want to share other items that we're looking at.
Right now, and right, and as having been on the board, that is a one-time snapshot. Right now, the, the fund report that we sent out on Friday was in the black. So, each time it's that one, one-time snapshot of the fund report that's coming out, so.
Some of the other things to allude to that is some of the changes in costs that have been absorbed by other funds in the past are now needing to be shifted over because of the curricular material changes. We have to shift those over to education. So, we are, we are working with the state directly on that education fund because of the funding formula changes and making sure that we are headed in the correct direction, and we're putting that back in. Fully understanding that it's a million dollars that we need to keep in reserve for that education fund.
Yeah, I just noticed past few meetings, you know, you've got negative numbers. And I'd never seen that before.
So, with the contract and with attrition and everything, with the contracts just ending at the end of June, the, we will see an increase moving in the education fund moving forward as that contract ended. Those teachers now, through attrition and retirement, will be on the contract. So, that will be impacting the education fund like it has in the past. The other is the curricular materials and the textbook adoption that we now have to absorb out of the education fund.
So, we should be seeing that number moving in the right direction sooner?
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah. I just got that question. They can't hear us on soon. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. If there are no other questions regarding the appropriations in the bond fund that we're looking at, I mean, this is, if anyone else wants to speak on that issue. If not, then, and thank you for participating, Tom, we'll now close the board hearing. And could I have a motion and a second to adopt the additional appropriations resolution?
First, you need to reopen the regular meeting.
Oh, okay. At this time, we will reopen the regular meeting. Could I have a motion and a second on the additional appropriations resolution, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll second.
Thank you, Stephen. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Secondly, could I have a motion and a second to adopt the final bond resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Ethan.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on. There we go. We need to take a look at the consent items, and that includes the minutes from the July 21 regular meeting, approval of the minutes from the August 5, 2025 meeting, and approval of the minutes from the August 5, 2025 study session. Kyle, did you say you had a change?
Yes, I was not present on the July 21 meeting. So, I would make a motion, cite that amendment for approval of all three.
With, with the correction?
With the correction of me being present on July 21.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan. All those in favor of approving the consent items, what is your idea? Motion carries five to zero. Next, we have the approval of the funds report as presented. Shawty, you sent those out to all of us. So, at this time, we have, and we could do all those at the same time, correct?
Yep.
All right. And the funds report, the claims, the funds report totaling... That was the minutes. This is approval of funds report as presented. So, everybody have a chance to look at that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And the total is, if I can get this to come up. Okay. First, we have claims at $850,295.05. We also have payroll totaling $776,335.18. And I still don't see the funds report. Okay. Thank you. I was having a moment. All right. So, the funds report at this time in the, has everybody read these? And I don't have to run through them, or would you prefer I run through them?
It's behind me, too.
It's behind me. That's for me to see back there. Okay. All right. If everybody's good here, I will accept a motion that we accept those as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Kyle.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Next, we have information. And this is the second reading of the policies that were, there are myriad of policies that came out with at the end of the state legislative session this year. And it was recommended by Dr. Ryan Snotty, who is our guru with all things policy, that we go ahead and consider this both the second and third reading because a lot of these laws went into place. You're looking at me? Can I go somewhere wrong?
This, this portion, the, a lot of these are gonna be a second reading. And you've got another agenda item that is a second and third of just two policies. So, this large batch, this large batch that you have is just gonna be a second reading.
Okay. So, we have a second reading on those policies. Any questions? If not, we'll move on. For the action item J, approval of the second and final reading of policies, PO 2021 and PO, PO 221. Did I miss a two?
Triple two.
2221.
2623.
23. Thank you. You can see better on my computer than I can. Okay. And then, so, do I have a motion to approve those two policy change, uh, policy updates?
So moved.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Thank you, Stephen. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Approval of the use of Final Site for website apps for parents.
Calendar.
We have to do a calendar, too.
Yep.
Yes, we have a new proposed calendar for the 26, 27 school year.
Correct. So, I would say, working with the administrative team and secretaries, we generated three calendars, brought those to the board for the study session, and very much value input. In fact, I think on this, you will see that we moved one of the make-up days based on both a suggestion from the board as well as a survey that went out to all of the teachers. So, really want to thank the teachers in regards to their voice and input. Option three was unanimously their favorite option. And then, within that, they liked the idea, the majority liked the idea of moving that make-up date to a little bit later so that we have more academic time and a little bit of a break then a little bit later on, as Mr. Martens suggested. So, I want to thank the teachers for filling out that survey. And I believe that this option three with that one change best represents what the survey indicated teachers would like to see and works best with the administrative team and testing and everything that goes into that. Okay. So, looks like we have a calendar that seems to be popular with everyone. So, if I would accept a motion at this time?
So moved.
Thank you, Stephen.
Second.
Thank you, Kyle. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Now, we can talk about Final Site. Approval of the use of Final Site for website apps for parents. This is something that we as a board have talked about with Jana and Casey Coles and I. And who was the other one, Mark? Were you involved in that?
No, I was not.
Is it just the two of us?
Mr. Kissler.
Mr. Kissler. We looked at different sites and how it would look on our website to make it more user-friendly. And we, we came up with the Final Site and had an excellent presentation. And then they, again, presented to the board at our last study session. So, we think this is a good choice, and it's gonna be, it looks like it's gonna be cost-neutral.
Well, so Shawna and I started running numbers on this. First of all, I did apply for a grant for this, a community impact grant. Still waiting to receive word on that. But speaking with the community foundation, they found aspects of this that they thought were very promising. There are contracts that we are currently in. So, we'll have to look at making sure that as we move forward, that we're exiting out of those contracts for it. So, out of the chute, it is going to cost a bit more. Waiting on to see if that grant money will come in. Also spoke with Shawna about other options to pay for it. So, for the first year, it would not be cost-neutral as we're getting out of some of those contracts and waiting to hear about the grant monies. But then, moving forward and working with the team, we do believe that there are apps that we can drop, things that we can do differently. And at that point, would be a cost-neutral to the district as a whole.
But it should be overwhelmingly easier for everybody to navigate.
Correct.
So, I would accept a motion that we approve the use of Fantastic Site for a web.
So moved.
Thank you, Stephen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kyle. All those in favor, motion carries five to zero. Approval of the Little Zebby's Ready To daycare grant. Do share.
So, this has been an ongoing effort for probably the last 14 to 16 months, engaging with the community. A lot of support from city government. Mayor Odell attended the majority of those meetings, if not all of those meetings. Fedco was involved, Michael Ladd, several other gentlemen, a lot of community input. There was a time when we weren't sure that we would meet the match. Optimus Group, Jim Streeter really did a really nice job of helping rally the community, make sure that we got all of those matching grant funds that we needed to, to make sure that the grant moved forward. Mr. Snyder and I have sat down with multiple businesses, multiple entities across the community, understanding that this is a need for our community. And with that, the state has awarded us a $2.5 million grant to go towards the opening of daycare for the community as a whole.
Seems, it's pretty exciting, pretty exciting.
Lot of behind-the-scenes work. Jason and his crew did a really nice job helping.
So, I would accept a motion that we approve the Little Zebby's I-Ready To daycare grant.
A hearty thanks to everyone involved in, in getting that grant. So moved. I'll second.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Mark. Yeah, this has been kind of a dream come true. And Jason, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Are you, are you ready? Oh, I'm sorry. He got caught. No, are you excited about this?
I'm ready.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations.
That was last was Joe, by the way.
Oh, wow. He's so cute. Okay. And moving on, student and stakeholder focus donations. Every meeting, we are honored by the amount of donations that are sent our way. So, this, this month, we have Columbia Elementary, $500 for teacher appreciation from Stacy Carvey-Chain House Foundation. Columbia Elementary, unknown. 115 composition notebooks for first grade from the Stacy Carvey-Chain House Foundation. Riddle Elementary, $500 teacher appreciation from Stacy Carvey-Chain House Foundation. RHS. Whoop. Yeah. Riddle. Did I miss Riddle?
You said Riddle.
Okay. RHS. $500,000 for teacher appreciation.
Justify the number, too.
$500,000 for teacher appreciation from Stacy Carvey-Chain House Foundation. RHS Athletics, $3,500 for purchase of golf cart. Rochester Football Club is the donor. RHS, $500 for Key Club from the Key Wonders. RCSC, $6,500 for food backpacks in the corporation from Mill Creek Church.
Go back up a couple more. Give us one of the RHS athletics.
RHS has to get more money. RHS Boys Basketball, $200 from Keystone Incorporated. We're always overwhelmed by the amount of donations that the district receives. Every month, we, we are honored and blessed by individuals and corporations, et cetera, churches who come forward and help meet needs in our school community. So, we thank all of these folks. So, at this time, I would accept a motion that we approve the donations as read.
So moved.
We're kind of read.
So moved. I'll second.
Thank you, Stephen and Mark. All in favor, motion carries five to zero. The green just went dead. Thank you. At Columbia, Columbia Elementary School, Emily Bridge. It's a transfer to kindergarten IA at Columbia from sub for a rate of $14 an hour. RHS, Adrianne Pollack, National Honor Society sponsor, stipend of $438. Brendan McLean, tryout director, stipend of $2,832. Special services, special services. Montessoro Pico Lira, paraprofessional for English learners at our RMS and RHS, hourly rate $14 an hour. Emily Kinzer, second grade special ed teacher at Riddle for the 25, 26 school year, salary $42,000. Kenna Ogul, paraprofessional, special needs at Riddle, hourly rate 17.25 per hour. Transportation Department, Elizabeth Reinhold, bus driver, special needs, pay per day $158.76. Maintenance, Brad Albertson, Building Tech, effective July 30, 2025, hourly rate $14 an hour. Curtis Shaffer, Building Tech, effective July 31, 2005, hourly rate $14. Brian Hodson, Building Tech, effective August 12, 2025, hourly rate $14. RHS Athletic recommendations. Bailey Brown, volunteer coach for varsity volleyball program. Daniel Cisneros, volunteer coach for varsity boys soccer program. Mitchell Shaffer, volunteer coach for varsity boys soccer program. Corporation resignations. Megan Allen, Columbia Elementary and RHS Drama, co-director, affected Friday, August 15, 2025. Kelly Pelco, Columbia Elementary Kindergarten IA, affected August 4, 2025. And I'm not seeing her. Kristy Bitterling, RHS Library Paraprofessional, affected August 12, 2025. And termination, And termination, Brittany Meyer, affected August 13th, 2025. I believe that covers all of them at this time. So, uh, I am requesting that we can have a motion, somebody have a motion that we approve the personnel report as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Stephen.
Second.
Thank you, Kyle. Motion carries five to zero. Yes, we have, go ahead. Uh, staff reports, we'll hear from our principals.
Sure. Mr. Owens, do you mind starting us off with staff reports and we'll just work our way through the district, please?
All right, so we are starting week three. Uh, I want to thank the board, Mrs. Vance, for the first day with staff, uh, the board's participation. We truly appreciate seeing the faces. Um, we had our first day for students the next day and, uh, since RHS won the competition, we got donuts from Mrs. Vance, so thank you for that. Um, we started sending kids to the Career Center on August 7th. Uh, we completed hearing screenings also on August 7th. We have a new picture company. Uh, they did a tremendous job. We did pictures in like an hour and a half, hour and forty-five minutes quicker than we ever have, um, on August 12th. Tomorrow, we have the Steered Straight presentation, um, so we're excited for that. I want to thank SRO, Rick Utter, for getting that set up and working with the community closely to bring that to our community. There's also a parent portion of that, which is six to eight PM in our auditorium, uh, tomorrow night. Um, then on the 29th, we do have our FCA, uh, tailgate party. Uh, we'll have Labor Day, um, and grades will be due September 7th, which is crazy that we're already starting to think about that. And we have a blood drive on the 16th. I know we have another board meeting before this, but it's a big week for our seniors. College Go Week is September 22nd through 26th. That's a huge week to get their applications in because the fees for those are waived. So parents, please pay attention when that week comes up. Uh, we've also started fall play auditions for Pistols and Posies. Uh, we'll be hanging out in the roaring twenties in Chicagoland. Um, uh, Mrs. McLean has started those, uh, auditions. They were this afternoon and they are Wednesday afternoon. We've encouraged a lot of people to try out for that. Uh, the community foundation was in to talk about the Lilly Scholarship and future scholarships for our seniors. Um, we began having our grade level meetings and, uh, tackling different things with those groups. Uh, we've had great meetings with our math department to get a game plan ready for this academic year, um, looking to make some huge jumps in that department. Uh, we have vision screenings and the dentist coming to the corporation here in the next couple of weeks. So we've sent out information on that, parents, so please be filling those permission slips and so forth out. Um, our first official band performance is August 29th. I don't know if anything else is going on that night, but there will be a band performance. And, um, I want to thank the Stacy Carvey Shane House Foundation because Teacher Appreciation Week kind of hits this back pocket kind of hard, so that will help Lori and I with that. That is tremendously appreciated. So, questions? I appreciate everything we got going on. Thank you.
I'll start out with, uh, just thanking the Stacy Shane House, um, organization as well for the donations, not only for the teacher appreciation, which is greatly appreciated, um, but also they, uh, helped, um, getting our, uh, some writing, uh, logs and things for our first grade, some composition notebooks and stuff. So thank you very much for that. Please pass along to the board and, uh, appreciate that. Uh, obviously, first, uh, couple of weeks of school, uh, things have gone really well for us. Uh, been a very smooth start. Want to thank transportation, maintenance, everybody for all their work in preparations for that, um, secretaries across the corporation. Everybody works together and try to get all that stuff together, uh, and it went, uh, went very smooth this year. There's always a few hiccups, but we're all happy about that. Our open house was a great success. Um, I want to just mention, uh, what, who all we had turn out for that. Besides a tremendous parent and student, uh, turnout, we also had, uh, great community turnout because we host a, um, community fair where we try to bring in as many resources as we can from the community, uh, make them available for our, our parents to get to meet the people, meet some people face to face. It could be resources for housing, it could be resources for food, could be resources just for, uh, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, that kind of stuff, or just developing relationships like with our local law enforcement. So we had the Sheriff's Department, we had Fort County, 4C now, uh, we had the Boys and the Girl Scouts, we had, uh, DCS there, um, Firefly, which is, uh, work is the Community Partners, um, organization. We had the Purdue 4H Extension there, uh, we had our Before and After Care, which you guys got a chance to meet and, uh, recognize. Uh, we had our compassionate healthcare there, uh, the Department of Family and Social Services, Fulton County Hope, um, the Public Library was there, uh, Promise Indiana 529 was also, um, present. So it was a great, uh, opportunity for parents to get to meet and, uh, interface with some of those organizations. Uh, we also had hear, hearing screenings that we've completed, um, and our DD pre-K had their open house the other night and today was their first day. Uh, so we got those kiddos in the building today and it was, uh, it was really good to see them back as well. Upcoming, um, this time of year, we're doing a lot of beginning of the year testing, bringing in that initial data, uh, so that we can look at that and determine our courses of action. We have the dentist coming, uh, Lucas had set that up for us, uh, for the whole corporation. Uh, they're coming September 2nd. We have Zebra Zone at the end of the month, uh, which is always an exciting time for the kids, but also a good time for us to, uh, talk about our character trait for the month and, uh, and help reinforce that. On September 2nd and 3rd, the first grade classes will be going to McClure's, which is a, uh, favorite, uh, one of the favorite, uh, field trips for those kids. Uh, they have a lot of fun. There's usually a pig, pig that gets kissed by somebody and they seem to really enjoy that, I don't know why. And, um, we have a Duke Energy Show coming on September 9th. So, thanks for everything, thanks for all the donations and, uh, we appreciate it.
Mr. Bernacki?
Yes. Also want to thank, uh, Stacy Shane House Foundation for that $500 as well. I know, uh, I myself and, uh, front office and PTO are very excited to learn and planning how we can, uh, spend that for our teachers that week. Uh, our first day of school was a great success, uh, in particular with, uh, arrival and dismissal. Want to give a shout out to transportation for that as well. That went really, really well this year. Um, I think like most of the buildings, we held our first fire drill already and that went well. As Mr. Snyder mo- noted, in Columbia, teachers at Riddle also are already doing our beginning of the year testing with our kids, so we were collecting all of that data and should be done, I think by the end of this week and they'll make any proper adjustments. As the other building said too, we've got the dentist coming on September 2nd and paperwork was sent home for that. We've got our third grade vision screening, will be in one week. We also had a successful open house, so thank you to all the parents and students that came. That lights, uh, cute pictures there with the Riddle signs, we liked that a lot. And thank you to students and teachers for a great first, uh, couple of weeks. It's been awesome. Thank you to the board.
A lot more of the same, so I'll try to go quick. Um, we did have Riddle to Middle as well as open hours for sixth and seventh graders to come and get their schedule locked and all of that on August 1st. That was a good day for everyone. Uh, first day of, uh, teacher day, organizational day, we had Renew Brew come and serve our teachers' iced coffee or refreshers. That was a big hit, so thank you to Renew Brew. Um, day one with students, we had our PBIS day where we go over rules, play games, we also did a cone of ice on that hot afternoon, which is a hit with everybody. That was on the 5th. We also had our first fire drill and did a reverse evacuation drill on the same day, on the 8th. Seventh grade hearing screening was on the 8th. Our school pictures were on the 11th. I will, um, ditto what everyone else said and it was very well received. Seems like it went well, so looking forward to more from them. Our NJHS inductions were on the 11th. Open house was on the 12th. Was very well attended, ate us, ate all of our taco bar and all of our big cookies. We were completely out, so always a hit and we love that, so that was well attended. We did all of our callouts and had all of our first practices for fall sports, so those are in full swing. Coming up tomorrow, as, um, Oscar mentioned, our Steered Straight Assembly is in the morning. Uh, we will do our I-Learn test security training on Wednesday with Mrs. McLaughlin. We have our big RMS back to school dance on Friday, the 22nd, so students and staff are looking forward to that. Vision screenings on the 25th for fifth grade. RMS Band Instrumental Rental Night is on the 27th. Smile of Indiana Dentistry on, uh, September 3rd and Sports Pictures on the 10th. And I also want to thank the Stacy Shane House, uh, Foundation. It didn't make it to the, the board dunks, but I've already texted the secretary to make sure we get our donation up there to, to us. We appreciate that. Any questions?
Mr. Shane House?
So, same thing that they talked about, I know that, um, vision and hearing screens have been done, um, went last week to DDPK, open house, and that was well attended by parents and bringing little kids and that was always fun to see and see kids that we haven't seen since May. They're starting to be back, um, September, the 8th will be, uh, family night for the, um, EL program here at the Learning Center, so that'll be exciting to see some community members come out and, um, um, new people that are in the EL program here in the corporation, um, staying down here in the building. We had our fire drill and, and reverse evacuation drill and, and all that fun stuff.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhold?
Uh, in transportation, we're pretty calm, thanks to the building levels for the start of the school year, made it pretty smooth, uh, with their help. Elizabeth coming in, took the reins to the special needs bus, settling, we're good. Uh, other than that, we're, we're rolling with the year and bringing on the good times.
Thank you for your help and support. Ms. Fowler?
So I'm currently processing through the direct certifications and the free reduced forms. All households get a 30-day carryover for the start of the school year to allow this to happen. Um, I have applied and we're pending approval for reimbursement for the meals for the 25-26 school year. That can happen anywhere from two weeks to eight weeks, it just depends on the state. I've also filled out to renew our food service permit with the Health Department and we're waiting for them to send the new ones out to us for this year. Coming up, um, I have a meeting with the commodity specialist from the IDOE for this upcoming school year. They usually don't open up those deliveries till about October. And all the managers, including myself, will be meeting with the Health Department specialists to go over to the new food code that they've added, so that way we're aware of what's going on and what changes we have to cover. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Maintenance Department, we are, uh, we're battling some wonderful moles this year. Seems like everybody's having a problem this year, but it's taken a toll on our, uh, on our grounds this year. Um, we're continuing working through that. We're battling, uh, some air temp issues in, in the, in the schools throughout the district. We're looking at a new supplier, uh, cutting down delivery costs, costs over the paper towels and chemicals, cleaning supplies. We got trees trimmed at the middle school to better see out in the playground area and stuff to monitor the kids. We are looking at, uh, we're getting quotes right now to get a tree removed at Riddle School, a couple at Columbia and, uh, Summit Administration for the tennis court project. Got all the pea gravel done over at Riddle, so the playground looks pretty good. Maybe hard to walk in some spots, but it looks pretty good. Uh, had some issues with the chiller at middle school, got it cleaned, it's up and running, running pretty good. Have you had any issues, Cassie? Since then? No. And, uh, we got the basement cleaned out at Riddle or Middle, uh, the Riddle Shed and moved some furniture from Columbia to middle school. Then finally, we got training on the pool, on the new pool, uh, filtration system on how to run it. So, we ran into a couple glitches and had to call the company for some advice. So, other than that, everything's going pretty decent. Thank you.
So I want to thank the team, um, I sent out an email to the majority of the team, but thank you to a successful start. It is really difficult to align all departments and you guys have done a wonderful job this year and it takes a lot of communication and sitting down and making sure we're on the same page, so thank you all. And I think that you heard that reiterated across the departments, but I do appreciate your work and your efforts and your communication and support of each other.
At this time, we will open the floor to, um, any public, uh, questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm Matt from, um, to follow up with the last time I was here at school meeting. Um, so I did what the board suggested is, uh, had a meeting with Vance Bernacki.
Can I just ask him to give us your name?
Yeah. Uh, so my name's Houston White. I'm the dad of Houston Junior. And, uh, so he originally had an IEP since he was three years old. He's got Chiari malformation and a tethered cord, so he struggles with a few areas and one of those being speech. His speech kind of come and goes. Uh, he's been with his twin sister, uh, in the same class throughout his whole school year. Last year, we went ahead and split him up and he struggled quite a bit last year. And he's non-verbal, so when he gets a little stressed out or nervous, um, he'll just won't speak or he'll stutter real bad. So, this year, at the beginning of the school year, I, um, contacted Bernacki to request him, um, first off, he's, he's in the high ability class and I didn't want him in the high ability class. And, uh, also, I wanted him with his twin sister, um, in same class, just to help him out, uh, with his speech. So Bernacki told me that that's not how he runs a school, that's not how he places his kids. So that conversation ended pretty quickly. I then contacted Vance. Vance said, "Well, if he has an IEP, yeah, go get ahold of Lucas, um, that shouldn't be an issue." And that's when I learned that, uh, he has no IEP. So I said, "That's, you know, a huge problem, that's why I was here at the last school board meeting," uh, 'cause I couldn't get anywhere with, uh, Jana or Luke, as they ghosted me for 10 days. I was trying to get everything set up before, before enrollment ended, uh, but didn't make that happen. So, following last school board meeting, um, you guys as the board told me to sit down with them, have a discussion, try to come up with an agreement. And that's what I did and, and as we get there, you know, I voiced my opinions of a speech and, and my concerns about that. And I didn't want him in the high ability class to relieve a little bit of stress, I want to work on his speech, um, so he's not stuttering and can, so he can talk and be more comfortable. And being with his twin sister, uh, I felt that that helped him out, that'd be in his best interest and, uh... Jana then handed me over, um, papers, wanted me to sign off, uh, medical, his medical, so the school could go in, get into his medical stuff and I, I denied that for the reason for, uh, his IEP was, was illegally removed. Me nor his mother, um, consented to that. And I asked them, because the only paper that I have is here, um, his IEP is in effect from, from January 10th, 2025 until January 10th, 2026. And we had no idea that, that these things got dismissed. So I asked for paperwork on that and they didn't have, they had nothing to show me else they wanted, but they had a piece of paper, wanted me to sign my medical rights over for little Houston and, uh...
Their documents matched our documents. They claim that he tested out, but the only documents they have is the same documents that we're holding in hand, that his IEP is good until January. They claim he tested out of speech, but I could bring my son in here right now in front of all of you guys and there's no way in hell that my son tested out of speech when he can barely speak a sentence. There's no way. It was illegally removed, we made a complaint with the state and then we did post a Facebook and ended up having to remove our post for the simple fact that multiple IEP parents have had the same issue under Bernacki. Not following what their kids need, chasing them out of the school because he doesn't want to work with IEP parents. We did the cast and walkthrough and gods and gods, how many parents? Fifteen, twenty parents from Rochester? All in the elementary hallway from Bernacki's school? Make it make sense. Just because there aren't a lot of people here doesn't mean that WSBT hasn't had gods of people anonymous, anonymously contact her with issues. They don't want retaliation on their kids. It's a small community, they have businesses. This is a known factor. The school board is aware. We've been told that this has been an ongoing issue and there's been several Bernacki We've been told that this has been an ongoing issue and there's been several Bernacki complaints that have not been handled over the years. So we'll let the state do the investigating, but there's probable cause and it's not just us.
So we followed up that meeting the following Friday with Vance and Bernacki and they're not going to budge on putting him in his twin sister's class. They said it's going to take 50 school days before we can get another IEP reinstated. And so we chose to not enroll them at Riddle for these issues. Still haven't received any calls from Vance or Bernacki, they're not worried about it and they figured the problem's gone because we're not at their school. So, us as taxpayers, parents, it's all about the kids. What, you know, we want to put our kids first. All the kids in the community deserve to be what's in their best interest and that's not what's going on with them. I haven't been that treated that way at Columbia with Snyder, I've been treated that way at Middle with Murphy. I know how I'm supposed to be treated because those two treated me right. It's a Riddle problem, it's a Bernacki problem, and us as taxpayers, we want the board to do something about it.
And we have two students at the middle school. I was supposed to start work last week, my daughter was enrolled in full-time preschool. Bernacki and Vance not willing to work with us in any setting. We were willing to try and work toward testing for a new IEP if they would work with us by putting the twins in the same class, that was a no. I know what they're doing. They don't want us in the school district because we're speaking out and they want people to sit down and look pretty. But I have two kids in the middle school, now my job is gone, I had to put my kid in another preschool and I'm homeschooling my twins. And they're going to go to Caston once this is reinstated. Caston and Rochester do not line up on school breaks. The amount of crap that I have to deal with because one principal in your school district is unwilling to work with us, that's a problem. Whether we agree or like each other or not, the best interest of my kids are to be in Rochester's school. He said our attendance was a problem and that's why he doesn't want them in the same class. Do the math. He's watched me drag my twins in the school before, crying, not wanting to be there, work with me, help me put my twins in the same class, so we're not fighting to be there and maybe the attendance won't be a problem.
We tried to address the attendance at that meeting on Friday and Vance shut us down, she said she didn't want to hear about it. We're not going to talk about that right now. And with the attendance, these are young kids, they're, they're, you know, young. And we've had these issues when we pull up to Columbia, Snyder's out there, kids are crying, don't want to get out of the car, he comes out and says, hey, you want to be my helper? Gets them into school, gets them a snack, try to be at school, get them comfortable, call you, hey, I got your kid to school, he's doing great, we ask the kids when they come home. That's the love of kids, that's what we need in our schools. Bernacki doesn't do that. They're going to get a tardy, they're going to get punishment and huge, huge difference.
No nurturing.
We have four kids, two with IEPs and two regulars. Each kid's different. A kid with an IEP means that they need a little extra help. They might be a little harder to deal with, but that's kids. I got two that doesn't have IEPs, no problem, put them in school, you're not going to have any issues with them. But there's IEP kids, they're a little extra, extra work, but they just, they deserve all the, all the work.
Yep. And socialization. As much as I love to say I want to homeschool, my kids need to be around other kids. That helps their growth, that, that's going to help Bub's speech. Be sitting at home all day, on a computer and bookwork, who's he communicating with to help his speech? It serves no purpose other than the education aspect.
So, we made, it was a hard decision, we, we think that it's important them being in public schools, just for the socialization and everything that comes with that, growing up, but not at Riddle.
No.
So, our other two kids, we enrolled them, they're in middle school and they're having the best year yet, so.
And there's other IEP kids that have not left the district and were waiting to get to the middle school and have been wonderful at the middle school. So either people are moving out or praying their kid gets to middle school faster and faster. Riddle is the common denominator with all IEP parents that I've talked to. So you guys need to do some work in the community because there's an outcry, but everyone's scared to speak up.
Nobody wants a, a bullseye on, hey, me, I'm here for, for my kids and everybody else's kids, it's a problem, we want to do something about it.
And their staff in the system right now.
They have contacted us, but they're afraid their job can be in jeopardy. So it's, it's a real issue and I know, everybody knows about it, it's a small town, but we need to do something about it.
I'd like to add something to that. I am Brooke D'Amico and I am the aunt of the twins. I actually had Bernacki in school when I went to Culver. I graduated 10 years ago, he was my speech and English teacher, he was awesome. He was one of the best teachers there at Culver, I had a really great experience with him and when I found out that my nieces and nephews were going to Riddle School and Bernacki was the principal, I was ecstatic, I really was, until like every year, it keeps going downhill, downhill, downhill. And with him being a speech teacher formally, he should have known that Houston Junior needed help. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you for the comments, Brooke. And also, thank you, Houston, and I didn't get your name.
Jessica.
Sorry, Jessica. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I want you to know that as a board and as individuals, we all truly care about kids. You know, your, your concerns are, are important to us. And we will work as a, as a team and see what we can do to help resolve the situation if, if there's anything else that's in the board's purview, because, you know, we follow a chain of command here. And it's the principal, the superintendent, and then the board. And so we are like the last stop, but I, so we will follow chain of command and see what needs to be done if it comes to our level.
Yeah, thank you. We didn't intend on it ever going this far. We, we tried having a sit-down meeting. The last board meeting, Casey had told us, we went with Bernacki after and Nicholas, I believe, his name is?
Lucas.
Lucas. And Bernacki didn't stay and we never met Lucas before and he is wonderful. Willing to just hear it out. Good luck speaking to Bernacki. It, it's not going to happen, there is no, I'll work with you here if you compromise here. We're willing to compromise, but give us a bone too. And there is no bone, there, nothing. That, that's not willing to work with us.
Being a former student of Bernacki, I am honestly at a loss of words, like just everything that I've been hearing about the last several years, like that is not the teacher that I had in school. I don't know what's going on, but got to get it figured out because there's little kids at stake and I was a high schooler.
Your, your members are in person. We're, if he wants, no, I'm not saying sit down, please, if you have some fellows who want to share, Houston, please do.
Yeah, if I'm allowed to speak, I'll speak. So, you know, my next step, so I went to Bernacki, didn't get nowhere, I went to Vance and she was helpful until there was no IEP and then she backs Bernacki up. I was asking simply, can he be in his twin sister's class to help him with his speech?
Until we got the IEP back.
Till we got the IEP back. It's, it's a simple no, you have no rights and we're not doing that. So my next step is I had to, I made a complaint down, down at Handy. This isn't fun, it's not fun to fight. So I don't even know why such a, it's such a big deal. I voiced my concerns, my kid's never been to his office, never been in trouble and obviously he was in the high ability class, so he's getting good grades. It's not like I'm here to try to stir the pot up, but it's what's in best of my kids' interest.
And that's your job as a parent, that's your job as a parent. Any other questions or comments before we adjourn the meeting?
Okay, I'm not just saying this, I don't want my face out there, no, and I'm sorry for that, but I wasn't going to talk, I really wasn't. I prefer not. Okay.
Is she not on film? She doesn't want to be on.
I don't want.
We can't have it on record, but.
Okay, I don't want anything against my kids that are at Riddle, okay? But I will tell you that I homeschooled my child from 2018 to 2021 because of him, because of his school and the way he tolerates IEPs. I homeschooled my child for two years, best decision of my life. She is an A and B student, you can look her up yourself and look at all of her past grades, go for it. Her name is, you'll love her grades and her attendance and everything else, but I homeschooled her because of him. We had issues with IEP, she came home crying every single day, talking about her teacher. So I called and I reached out, talked to the teacher, the teacher told me that my child was ignorant and told me that she should sit at her desk when she comes back from speech class and shouldn't move because it's not her job to teach twice. And I'll tell you her name, Mrs. Brooks, does that make you feel any better? I talked to him about it and he literally told me that that wasn't true and what I'm saying isn't true. So I said, forget it and I pulled her out. He didn't like to hear it, he fought me, he called the police on me because I told him that I didn't appreciate him trying to talk to me, I said, the damage is done. I pulled her out of the school, okay? I homeschooled her. That was horrendously probably the worst thing I've ever done in my life. I do not regret it by any means, best decision of my life. But now I have a child that is in Riddle and now I have to sit here and wonder, are we going to be okay? Because you know what? I don't know if I can homeschool again. Best decision, but I don't know where I'm at in my life if I can actually do it like I did with my first one. And I don't want to homeschool my kids, I really don't. It's a mental toll, I'm going to be honest with you, it's hard. I respect teachers for this, okay? He told me that I couldn't do it, we found out she was dyslexic, had hearing problems, everything else. And he told me that I'll never do it, I'll never be able to teach her, I'm not educated enough and as a dedicated parent, I did just fine. And I asked if she could participate in iLearn to see if she was where she needed to be at. That was the first time she's ever passed iLearn, was after I homeschooled her. An A and B student, so take some time, look her up as a student, she does great, everyone loves her and I appreciate every single other staff member that's been here. I do not have a problem. Absolutely love Mr. Snyder, I had him in school. Everyone else, personally, I don't know because I haven't had an issue with him, but I know his name. And I don't think anyone else should know his name as well as I did, or they should. So I am sorry that I have to say something and I really shouldn't have, but this is seven years ago and it still bothers me and I let it go and I wasn't going to bring it here today. But it is not fair that other people have to go through this and they shouldn't have to. So you guys can sit there and do whatever you say or do and stuff like that, but this isn't new, this isn't new at all.
And we're not the only two.
No, there's more. There's people that move their kids to Valley, Caston, everything else.
And a lot of them being IEP kids.
Yeah, a lot of them. So hopefully I don't regret my decision speaking up against him since I have kids in the school system. But I guess maybe my name's out there, so if I have problems, then we'll know why. So, take it however you want, think that I'm a horrible person, I don't care, but this, this is just ridiculous. I wish I could take Mr. Snyder with me, every single grade over, every level, I'm just, I'm so over this. And it's just disgusting to see other people have to deal with him. So that's seven years ago. So we've been dying for seven years on this and I'm sorry.
I appreciate your comments, I really do. And it's your job as a parent to advocate for your kids and I would, would hope that, I would, I would hope that there would be no repercussions at all.
I hope so.
And if there are, you may should to call the central office and, and let us know.
Yeah. I really hope that I didn't just regret my decision telling you my name and voicing my opinion.
I appreciate, I appreciate you giving us your name, but I also want you to know that if there's an issue, you need to let super, let the superintendent know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anything from the board? If no more questions, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion. All in favor? Five to zero, the, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance tonight.